Resolution two zero one eight one zero one two, moved by Board Member Byer, seconded by Board Member Ellis. Whereas the Thompson Planning District Board has been advised of council, sorry, of a Crown Land Miscellaneous Lease number seven two five five four for a seasonal campground. And whereas the Development Review Committee has reviewed the application and have no concerns, now therefore be resolved that the Thompson Planning District Board advise the Crown Lands and Property Agency that approval of the application shall be subject to the applicant obtaining the required permits from the Planning District. We'll go to the Director of Development Services for update.
This was submitted, uh, this application was submitted by Thompson twenty twenty for the lease of approximately one hundred thirty acres of vacant land, located at Oskel and Lake off of Highway six, intended to create a new-
Seasonal campground, which was identified as a local need through the Thompson twenty twenty process. Um, the proposed development is seasonal and non-permanent, and a legal subdivision will not be required under the Planning Act, and the parcel is already designated as LD, limited development zone, and will not require rezoning. Um, like was mentioned, this was, uh, application was reviewed at the July nineteenth meeting of the Development Review Committee. Committee had no concerns with the land lease, and recommended that the Thompson Planning District approve the Crown Land Lease.
Mover, Board Member Byer, anything else?
Um, I support this. I mean, people are actually camping there already. Um, if you do need the extra campsites, um, it's, uh, it's common. The people like to get away for the weekends, and I think it's wonderful that we can open up another area to residents.
Any, uh, Board members, any other questions? Uh, Board Member Matitek.
Will they be just valid to be operating this, and will they be charging for these services?
Uh, Mr. McGinnis?
The intention to Thompson twenty twenty is to move the Crown Land process forward, and then to tender out for an operator to privately operate this facility.
Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie, do you have any answer? Thank you. Uh, look to a motion to adjourn. Uh, Board Member Valentino, Board Member Smoak, all in favor? Carrie, we stand adjourned. Thank you. As we move into City Council, please change your name tags back to councilors. Okay, we'll, uh, call the regular meeting of council to order at, uh, seven fourteen on August thirteenth. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to the agenda? Mr. Sepatelli?
Uh, we have a resolution to, uh, council's consideration of a resolution to approve, uh, uh, agreement with, uh-
Nelson else First Nation.
To add that under Resolution seven point one two, uh, NCN First Nation?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I need a, uh, motion to approve, uh, an amendment to the agenda. Deputy Mayor Smoak, uh, and Counselor Valentino, all those in favor? Carrie. Uh, I need a motion to approve the, uh, agenda as amended. Counselor Byer, Counselor, uh, or sorry, Deputy Mayor, uh, Smoak, all in favor? Carrie, do you have any answer? Thank you. We're now going into general inquiries. We have a full agenda, so I just want to remind everybody, we have ten minutes. If there are any questions from the general public, please come forward, state your name and ask your question. This time I would call any questions from the general public. Second time, any ti- any questions? Third and final, seeing none, we'll move on to adoption of minutes. We have a regular meeting of council July sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, Resolution two zero one eight, one seven five, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Foley. Be resolved to minutes, the regular meeting of council held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Tosh, Manitoba on Monday, July sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie, do you have any answer? Thank you. We're now moving into reports. Uh, five point one, financial statement presentation. Understand, uh, Counselor Valentino is the Chair of Finance, is going to make a presentation, and I believe it's going to be up on the screens. Floor, yours?
Um, just for a little bit of background information, this is the financial statement analysis. It kind of goes, well, it does go along with our financial plan, which will be, um, on our website, I believe, as of tomorrow. So, some of the information, you'll see notes and sections that will refer to the financial plan that's been audited that you'll see online tomorrow. This was provided to, uh, the Finance and Admin Committee in a special meeting on July the twenty-third, and it was with our auditor, and all of council was also, um, asked to attend and ask questions. This was treated by our CFO, Jenny Krentz, who's away on holiday, so if there is any direct questions by council, we'll ask them, be directed to the chair, and then we'll have, uh, Ms. Krentz give back the exact, um, answers that you may have. So, going forward, under the first part is our balance sheet. So, you'll see when you read through the, uh, financial plan tomorrow that we've had a decrease in our cash and temporary investments of five million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. This has been mainly due to our wastewater treatment plant expenses of seven million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, eight hundred and thirty-four, and this is due to the corresponding grants for two-thirds of the share that will be received not until this year of two thousand and eighteen. So, please remember, this is our two thousand and seventeen financial plan. Um, our receivables have increased by one million, eighteen thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty-nine, so you'll see that will be referred to in Note Four of the plan. And some of the reasons for this is our government grants were increased by one million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars, mainly due to the two thousand and seventeen Water Main Renewal Federal portion of one million, five hundred thousand dollars that we received in two thousand and eighteen. Our taxes receivable were increased by three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars, and our utility receivables were increased by thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars, and our ambulance and other receivables were decreased by nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Few other points from our balance sheet. Our accounts payable were decreased by one million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, and this was due to our two thousand and sixteen Water Service Board invoices for the two thousand and sixteen Water Main Renewal and our wastewater treatment plant projects. We also had some deferred revenue increased by seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and two dollars, and this is mostly under the wastewater treatment plant deferred revenue. Our long-term debt principal has decreased by one million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, to a total of eight million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and your reference to that will be under Note Nine. Under our balance sheet continued, our tangible capital assets increased by ten million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So, some of these major capital items for two thousand and seventeen included, obviously, our wastewater treatment plant at a, at a point of seven million, three hundred and fifty thousand, eight thirty-four, our water main renewal program, the paving that we have done on Selkirk Avenue, the multi-use path completion on Princeton Drive, the work that was completed in the Burnwood Trailer Court for drainage, and any equipment purchases. And these are capital things that happened in two thousand and seventeen. Under the statement of operations in the financial plan, under the revenues column, you'll see that our user fees were above the plan by six hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. This was mainly due to our waste disposal ground revenues and our ambulance revenues. Our permits, licenses, and fines were below the plan by eighty-one thousand, three hundred, eighty-one thousand, three hundred dollars, and this was mainly due to the building permits and traffic fines that were below plan. Other revenues were above plan that were due by six hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars, and this was due to penalties and interest on any outstanding taxes we had, insurance proceeds, and interest revenues on our reserves. Our grants fell below plan by one hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. This was mainly due to the handy van not received until two thousand and eighteen. So, we do have the handy van, we didn't get the money till two thousand and eighteen, so that's why it was off from the two thousand and seventeen one. The water and sewer was below plan due to the wastewater treatment plant grant not recorded as revenue until the wastewater treatment plan will be completed. Under the statement of operations continuing, under the expenses, our general government was showing over budget by nine hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars for two thousand and seventeen, and this was due to the allocation of the utility administration costs of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, ninety-six dollars, and the negotiation costs, costs that were above our budget. Our protective services, it was under budget, and this was due to the RCMP below complement and staff vacancies, and just to remind the public that our RCMP complement sits at thirty-eight, and that's what we budget for at all times. And one million dollars was budgeted from the two thousand and sixteen surplus for RCMP prior costs that were not realized in two thousand and seventeen. You would have heard us, um, have discussions about that, about some of the upcoming RCMP costs that we will be incurring and did incur in two thousand and seventeen. Transportation services were below budget due to utility administration costs, however, were over budget in snow removal, road repair, and transit costs. Recreation and cultural services were over budget, and this was mainly due to the Norplex Pool. Environmental health, public health were on plan for the year. Under statement of operations, you'll see under the surplus heading that the reconciliation of the surplus, and that will be found when you refer to Schedule fourteen on the plan tomorrow, the overall deficit was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. The operating deficit was three hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and forty-nine, while the utility had a surplus of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. So, this operating deficit is attributable to the city budget for the transfer of the one million dollars from nominal surplus to the General Reserve for RCMP costs. Therefore, the city had a surplus of six hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight fifty-one. This can mainly be attributed to the receipt of the meter installation revenue from the Manitoba Water Services Board. Kind of makes a lot more sense when you actually look at the Schedule fourteen tomorrow. Some highlighted notes to this financial statement include, under Note Eighteen, you'll see the breakdown of the accumulated surplus, which is as follows. And when you look at these columns, um, two thousand and seventeen is the first column on your left, and two thousand and sixteen is the, the one on the right. So, in two thousand and seventeen, the general operating fund was seven million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three sixty-two, and that compares to the two, twenty sixteen amount of seven million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. Our utility operating fund for two thousand and seventeen is at zero, and in two thousand and sixteen, it was in a negative one eighty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. The TCA net of related borrowings, that's the tangible capital assets, and I identified some of them on that list for two thousand and seventeen. It was in two thousand and seventeen, fifty-nine million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, six ninety-seven, and in two thousand and sixteen, it was fifty-four million, eight hundred and twenty thousand, eight forty-five. The reserve funds in two thousand and seventeen were at twelve million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, sixty-three dollars, and in two thousand and sixteen, they were nine million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, one sixty-five. Our consolidated entities in two thousand and seventeen were three hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight, compared to two thousand and sixteen of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-five. The total for two thousand and seventeen is eighty million, two hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and fifty, and two thousand and sixteen, it was seventy-one million, nine hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-one. When you identify the notes tomorrow, you'll see Note Nineteen will include the entire breakdown of the council's compensation and expenses incurred by each council member, including mayor. Note Twenty will contain the trust fund information. This was previously under Schedule number seven, and now it will be identified under your Note Twenty. When you go to Schedule Two, you'll see some of our revenue highlights from two thousand and seventeen, and that will include our grants and lieu increased due to the NCN property recorded as a grant and lieu instead of property taxes, and this goes back to, um, when that became their property of July of two thousand and sixteen. Sales of services increased from two thousand and sixteen, and this was mainly due to the landfill revenues. Sale of goods increased from two thousand and sixteen, mainly due to controlled entity revenues and valet deferred revenues. And, uh, in saying to the valet deferred revenues, that was capital work and projects identified in previous years from a component of the grant and lieu. Permits increased from two thousand and sixteen due to the building inspection fees and traffic fines. Penalties and interest decreased by mainly due, mainly due to the several large balances that we had paid off in two thousand and sixteen. We had some properties with some outstanding that were paid. Schedule Two revenue highlights continued. Um, we've had a gain on sale of tangible assets that were increased due to insurance proceeds for the Norplex Pool Fire. Our water and sewer revenue increased due to Water Main Renewal Grant. Our grants decreased from two thousand and sixteen due to the CSO Grant for two thousand and seventeen for the five months versus the full year in two thousand and sixteen. And our Transit Debencher Grant is in its final year in two thousand and sixteen, and the diving board grant was in two thousand and sixteen also. The gas tax funding increased from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and seventeen, and this was due to additional funding that was received for the multi-use pathways. Schedule Three expense highlights. Our general government decreased from two thousand and sixteen, and this was mainly due to two thousand and sixteen, we had some additional transfers to the utility for our public works labor allocation. Our protective services increased from two thousand and sixteen, mainly due to the RCMP operating with the higher complement for two thousand and seventeen, and additional charges for the corp de commissionaire costs. Transportation increased from two thousand and sixteen due to an increase in snow removal costs, road repair costs, and transit costs. You look at Schedule Three, under our, some highlights of our expenses, our environmental health increased from two thousand and sixteen due to increased recycling costs. Our resource conservation and industrial development decreased from two thousand and sixteen as the director position was vacant, and there's no more Thompson Unlimited costs for two thousand and seventeen. Our recreation increased, and that was mainly due to the Manitoba Games capital and operating payment of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Schedule Five shows you the consolidated controlled entities amounts. The cont- the controlled entities had a surplus of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars, and it's broken down as follows. The Thompson Planning District was at a loss of eight hundred and twenty-four, or negative. Thompson Public Library, a negative of forty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-two. Thompson Zoological Society, two hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-six. Thompson Recycle Center, forty-three thousand, five hundred and nine. Thompson Unlimited at a negative of two thousand, seventy-nine dollars, and the Thompson Housing Agency at a fifteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar surplus. Schedule Six will show you the reserve balances, the increases and decreases for the year of two thousand and seventeen. The reserve balances increased by three million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine for two thousand and seventeen. This was mainly due to a transfer of one million dollars from our nominal surplus to General Reserve, as we talked about earlier with RCMP costs. The transfer of nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars from our landfill surplus, and this was because capital projects weren't done, so they were carried forward. And a transfer of one million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five from our utility surplus, and this was capital projects funded by grants. Sorry. And under Schedule Nine, our water and sewer revenue increased due to capital grants for Water Main Renewal and Water Meter Installation Grant received in two thousand and seventeen for two thousand and eleven installation. So, um, that was a, a kind of a back payment from the install of the water meters in two thousand and eleven. And then the increases of expenses for two thousand and seventeen were due to our additional expenses for now taking on the water treatment plant, and our surplus realized for two thousand and seventeen were due to the following issues. First off, the two thousand and seventeen Water Main Renewal was funded by seventy-five percent grant funding, and the amount was transferred to reserve for future projects. And the two thousand and seventeen water treatment plant costs were, ended up being below our budgeted costs, and we have no expenses incurred yet for our new wastewater treatment plant, obviously because it's not completed. So, that's the end of the two thousand and seventeen financial statement analysis. It is online, and tomorrow, when we post online the actual financial plan, you'll be able to make reference to the notes, um, that were identified.
I'll go to Administration, anything to add? Carrie?
Counselor Valentino had indicated that if members of the public do have questions, to please refer them to the Chief Financial Officer upon her return.
See none, we'll move on to the July check registers. Uh, five point two, uh, we have a July check register and staff, who's going to speak to us? Anybody? The register has been reviewed by the Finance Committee, um, and forwarded to council for, uh, questions. It comes forward as a report. Uh, I guess I would go to council, any questions? Counselor Wong?
Your worship, uh, I was just wondering what kind of business that we do that we have to pay three thousand dollars to, a check number two seven zero, two seven zero twenty-seven?
Page?
Yeah.
Seek Society of Thompson?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make note of that. Thank you.
Uh, second question will be my final question. I looked the whole entire check register, I didn't see any, any check writing out to, uh, community future. Is that mean the Thompson twenty twenty have something stopped right now? We do not fund them, or what? I'd like to know, because, uh, I don't like the project stopped. The money should be, continue going in. For the last six months, we've been giving out twenty-some thousand a month, so why this month we don't have any money going out? Any explanation, please?
Counselor?
Just, uh, when the, the bills or invoices are, are processed from North Central Development to the province of Manitoba, once it's received, the province of Manitoba, uh, funds the city of Thompson, who in turn then pays North Central Development for that service. So, it's likely just due to the fact is that it's summertime, and, uh, whether that payment has been processed by education and training.
Would it affect the operation?
No.
Seeing none, received for information. Uh, we're now going into correspondence. We have a letter received from Greyhound in regards to the termination of the contract between the city of Thompson and Greyhound Canada Transportation effective October thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the letter is to our city manager, notice of termination. As you may know, Greyhound recently announced it has made a difficult decision to downsize its Canadian business, and in connection with such reductions, will end all routes in Manitoba on October thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Accordingly, this serves as Greyhound's notice to the city that Greyhound is terminating the agreement effect as, effective as of thirty-first of day of October, two thousand and eighteen, the termination date. If you have any questions, please contact. Uh, this is in regards to Greyhound Canada Transportation, and this is Peter Hamel, Regional Vice President. We'll go to Administration for support on this.
Just to indicate, obviously, that, uh, in receipt of this, uh, at the end of July, uh, this letter was then brought forth, uh, in camera to a couple of the standing committees to sort of, uh, address as to what those next steps are, and then on to council in camera. Uh, so council has, uh, at a point, started looking at this and putting forth, uh, an ad hoc committee to sort of, uh, identify, uh, a number of scenarios and put forth a plan that can be presented back to council.
Thank you. Uh, council, any questions? Uh, just for the public's information, as Mr. Sepatelli has outlined, we've established a ad hoc committee which will contain members of the, uh, Public Works Committee, the Finance Committee, and council, as well as representatives, uh, from each of those committees that are non-elected. Uh, they will move forward with the mandate to, uh, come back to council, uh, by earliest in October, uh, with a plan that ranges from, uh, the extremes at the highest level, that replacing Greyhound with another operator, uh, in the same form, to no transit system at all. So, anything in between that, that's what the parameters that the, uh, the committee will be challenged with, and coming back to, uh, to council with recommendations moving forward. But the public should know that, uh, we have formed an ad hoc committee and will be working with the stakeholders to, uh, come to the most, uh, sustainable solution for transit in, uh, in Thompson. Uh, with that, uh, we'll move on to the next piece of correspondence, is from Jan Forster, Deputy Minister of Municipal Relations in regards to Strategic Municipal Investment Fund. Uh, the letter is to, uh, CAOs, I'm pleased to provide you with details on provincial funding that support municipalities as outlined in the two thousand and eighteen budget. Through the Strategic Municipal Investment Funding to municipalities in rural Manitoba will total up to a hundred and forty-eight million in twenty thousand, in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. By streamlining multiple programs, municipalities will be afforded the flexibility and ferocity in addressing important municipal services and critical infrastructure needs through the following baskets. Thirty-nine point eight million dollars municipal operating basket includes one point seven million dollars for rural handy transit service, two point seven five million for critical operating infrastructure needs for twelve former local government districts formerly provided by the Main Market Roads Program. Twenty-seven point six million dollars public safety operating budget for municipalities responsible for providing and paying for their own policing and firefighting support services in the cities of Brandon, Thompson, and Portage du Prairie. Eighty point six million dollars for municipal capital infrastructure basket. I want to also take this opportunity to formally communicate that for, starting this fiscal year, urban policing grants under the pu- public safety basket have been transferred to the Department of Justice to allow for better alignment of provincial policy on expect, expected outcomes and oversight of policing across the province. The detachment outlines the amount of operating funding your municipality will receive in two thousand and eighteen, which reflects the adjusted two thousand and seventeen grant level. The urban policing component of the public safety funding will be distributed by the Department of Justice to municipalities that receive this grant. Your municipality received an initial payment of municipal operating grant in early April. The balance of your two thousand and eighteen operating grant will be provided in two payments this year, in addition to support for firefighting services for municipalities that receive this funding. While overall municipal operating and public safety funding remained at two thousand and seventeen levels, some municipalities will see changes in their two thousand and eighteen grant amounts due to adjustments made to census population numbers used to distribute the per capita portion of these grants. Adjustments are required based on the successful appeals of, by municipalities to Statistics Canada of their two thousand and sixteen census populations. Building on formal consultations undertaken over the last two years, the Department of Municipal Relations has been working diligently with other provincial departments to simplify and transition capital infrastructure grants that would deliver better value for money to, uh, support rural infrastructure needs. The municipal capital infrastructure basket provides for up to eighty point six million dollars towards new and existing capital commitments. Payments will be made based on eligible claims for costs incurred for the fiscal year end. At this, uh, of this, up to two point two five million has been committed, committed as a final transition year of the former municipal road and bridge program. Applicants will need to demonstrate financial needs, strategic outcomes, and the ability to complete projects within this fiscal year. The intake data, or date for application closes on July sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and successful applicants will be announced shortly. Creating better assets and opportunities in economic growth is critical to building strong environment communities. The province has committed up to two hundred million dollars to maintain, repair, and upgrade many schools throughout Manitoba, including the construction of seven new schools, three of which are outside of Winnipeg. Additionally, the Department of Municipal Relations offers many provincial grant, uh, programs such as Community Places Program, Green Team Program, Hometown Manitoba, Neighborhoods Alive, Partner for Growth, and Manitoba Heritage Trust Program, which allows municipalities and nonprofit organizations to work together to address community development needs across the province. The government of Manitoba through the Department of Intergovernmental Affairs recently signed a historic ten-year bilateral agreement which will provide one point one seven billion dollars in federal funding through the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. On June fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Manitoba Strategic Infrastructure Secretary issued an expression of interest, EOI, of which submissions will be used to gather initial information on municipal infrastructure priorities. Information on the EOI can be located on both the Municipal Relations and Intergovernmental Affairs website. Municipal servicing, infrastructure, and community development priorities are many and extend beyond core investment categories. Look forward to strengthening our partnership as we work together to strategically plan, budget, and report on outcomes that are focused on the benefits for all Manitobans. Sincerely, Jan Forster, Deputy Minister. And on the receipt, the, uh, back page of that, the Strategic Municipal Investment Fund for the city of Thompson outlines a total grant of one point one two eight, two five, four point three three million dollars. April twenty eighth, uh, or twenty eighteen, initial payment of six hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and twenty, and forty-seven cents, July thirty-first, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six, and ninety-three dollars. September twenty-eighth, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six, and ninety-three dollars. Under the public safety grant for firefighter services, total grant of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. July thirty-first, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. September twenty-eighth, one hundred and sixty-four, and three hundred dollars. We'll go to Administration for support.
Just to indicate, we obviously see that this letter, uh, is a bit concerning, uh, just because we don't know what, uh, value, uh, that the city will be getting in the, in the policing grants. Uh, the province has kind of split their grant, which all used to be provided by Municipal Relations. I mean, last year, we were likely about two point six, uh, million in total. Uh, this one here is the one point, uh, one point, almost, one point two million. Uh, so, uh, through finance, we're trying to follow up with Municipal Relations to ensure that, uh, the subsequent grant now, which is administered in Manitoba Justice, uh, will equal what we got, uh, in two thousand and seventeen. So, uh, we're a bit, uh, proceeding with a bit of trepidation at this point, not knowing what those final numbers are, and if there is a negative impact on the city of Thompson.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Uh, Counsel Wong?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, can you explain to the public what is the, the Strategic Municipal Investment Fund for, and what is that for, and what can we use that money?
Sepatelli?
One million, and then the three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. What can we allocate for that money?
So, the, uh, the Strategic, uh, Investment Fund, uh, obviously is the next round of the, uh, uh, the Canada-Manitoba Infrastructure Program, uh, which is, obviously, they've identified it with, with a new name. Uh, each province signs on with the federal government for their allocation, uh, uh, from the province. Uh, the province, as part of the letter, has identified, uh, have sent out a, an expression of interest really to sort of try to get an idea from municipalities, what municipalities' priorities are for the next five years, uh, in order for them to likely establish, uh, their parameters, uh, in the, uh, in the allocations as this program goes forth. So, to answer your question, I mean, obviously, that we would, uh, take advantage of this fund, uh, much the same as we've taken advantage of the- the Canada-Manitoba Infrastructure Program when it was in place. And we have submitted expression of interest from the city of Thompson identifying a number of those long-term projects, infrastructure projects for the city of Thompson.
Seeing none, we'll receive it for information. Next, we have a memorandum from Becky Fleury, Director of Procurement Services, in regards to Manitoba Signs on to the Federal Provincial Territorial Collaborative. Subject: Manitoba Signs on to the Federal Provincial Territorial Collaborative Procurement Initiative. Manitoba has joined nine other provinces and territories in signing an agreement with Public Services and Procurement Canada, PSPC, which will enable Manitoba to use federal procurement tools to procure goods and services. This will allow Manitoba to leverage the combined spending power of public sector entities across Canada. By using collaborative federal procurement tools to purchase certain commodities, buyers from the province and territories can benefit from rates negotiated by the government of Canada, streamline their procurement efforts, and reduce the administration and legal costs. Buyers can also share knowledge and best practices on a range of commodities within their counterpart, with their counterparts. The Collaborative Procurement Initiative allows Manitoba to maximize value for money and become smarter shoppers. For more information about the Collaborative Procurement Initiative, they've provided their website. Under the terms of federal agreement, Manitoba may invite municipal academic institutions, schools, and hospitals, mass sector, to access various collaborative procurement tools. The mass sector may include regional, local, district, or other forms of municipal government, school boards, publicly funded academic, health, and social service entities, as well as any corporation or entity owned or controlled by one or more of the preceding entities. Based on the terms of the agreement, Manitoba's procurement services branch, PSB, will coordinate all access to the federal contracts for the Manitoba mass sector. Additional information included on how to participate is available on the PSP website. Please direct any questions to Manitoba's CCP Access Coordinator, Wendy Bonney, at 204-945-42929. We look forward to your anticipation, or your participation in this exciting initiative. Yours sincerely, Becky Fleury is the director. Mr. Sepatelli?
That this letter has been discussed at Finance and the Men Standing Committee of Council, and really there's an opportunity, or maybe an opportunity, for the city of Thompson to sort of partner with Manitoba on that when we do certain types of procurement purchases.
Questions from council? Seeing none, we'll receive for information. Next, we have a Province Manitoba News Release. Province announces the 2018 Municipal Road Improvement Program projects. Then we have the news release and the backgrounder. The Manitoba government is investing 2.25 million in funding for municipal roads, Municipal Relations Minister Jeff Wharton announced today, along with Chris Kirson, President of Association of Manitoba Municipalities. Investing municipal infrastructure ensures our communities can sustain continued long-term growth, said Wharton. Maintaining our municipal roads helps to increase economic activity, extended asset life, improve public safety and community development. Our roads are pipelines for the flow of both goods and services, and improvements ensure that our province will continue to see increased economic activity. The 2.25 million in Municipal Road Improvement Program funding was made available to ensure a smooth transition while government is restructuring program delivery models to reduce red tape, eliminate program duplication, and ensure value for money, the minister said. Restructuring program delivery allows for strategic approach for planning and budgeting for both the province and municipalities, he added. To ensure a seamless transition, 30 projects and 30 municipalities plus funding from 18 northern affair communities have been approved in 2018 for a total of 2.25 million. In addition to this funding, over 6 million is being provided to municipalities this year from previous commitments under this program. There are many grant programs that are available to municipalities across government, including the recently announced Canada-Manitoba Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program bilateral agreement that will provide more than 1.17 billion in federal funding over the next decade for infrastructure projects throughout Manitoba, said Wharton. The AMM is pleased to be at the table, working in partnership with the province of Manitoba to select projects for these essential programs, said Kirson. Infrastructure remains a top priority for municipalities and will continue to advocate for building strong communities throughout streamlined cost shared infrastructure funding programs with other orders of government. Consultations were undertaken September 2016 to begin a transition out of traditional capital infrastructure delivery and into a more flexible approach that gives municipality ferocity, said Wharton. We'll go to Mr. Sepatelli for background.
Just to indicate that the, this has been an ongoing program likely for five years or so, and based on the formula that was, or criteria that was established, the city of Thompson was eligible for $400,000 annually to this program, of which we've been budgeting for infrastructure projects on that basis. This year, our funding grant request was halved to $200,000 as the province is really canceling this program. What is in the agenda package tonight as well is a resolution for council to consider to pass an emergent resolution that can be considered at the AMM Annual Convention in November.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Ellis, Counselor Ellis.
My other concerns, this was just announced on August 3rd. We're already, we already have our crews, our contractor out there, preparing, preparing the site for the work. This is pretty late in the, in the season to be getting this kind of announcement when, when we were looking at $400,000 and we had been told by government bureaucrats that that money was coming.
For our city to only get the 200,000, based on always getting the 400,000, especially when I think the city of Thompson does its due diligence in getting our tenders and our budget done in a timely manner to try and get the best pricing and to only get half, as Counselor Ellis said, in August is so late in the year for us. So I'm glad to see the resolution coming up later in the meeting.
Just for the general public's information, the plan that we presented as a budget this spring included capital works and over and above the roadworks that are happening on Station Road, there was a milling project, I believe 11 additional areas that we would do just milling, taking off the top two inches of the road and milling it and putting it back down. Because of this cut, we've had to reduce the scope of that work. So we'll probably lose about eight of those 11 projects, depending on the cost of the Station Road project. If there's any excess funds that are realized through the construction of the, or reconstruction of Station Road, those funds will be put back into the milling program. But as Counsel Valentina and Counselor Ellis have stated, we received this notice in mid-August, of which we're anticipating a $400,000 announcement based on the information we were provided by staff of the departments. We received $200,000 allocation, so we're having to at the last moment adjust our budget and our operations. Counsel Wong.
Can you please explain a bit further about this paving project that we allocate the money? Besides this money, we're coming to do the Thompson repay program. What else the money coming? So that way the public will not misunderstand. Yes, we got $200,000 cut, but there's more money coming from different direction, different sources or grant?
I think in regards to this specific line item, as councils are aware, we budgeted $400,000 for roadworks this year, and this specific grant was announced at $200,000 level. So independent of any other decisions, this was in the budget for $400,000. We were led to believe that that's what we were getting, and we were, and it has been announced that we were receiving $200,000. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to a letter from Marcia Thompson, Assistant Deputy Minister of Manitoba Health, Seniors, and Active Living, in regards to the Main Street North Project. This letter is to myself. Your request to meet with Health and Seniors and Active Living Minister Calvin Kirson on June 26th to discuss the Main Street North Project has been referred to me for response. Please accept my apology for delay in replying. Excuse me. We understand you may, you met with Manitoba Justice officials about this matter. We trust that you found the meeting helpful and encourage you to continue working towards, together to find solutions. Manitoba Health, Seniors, and Active Living would welcome receiving any updates or findings from the Main Street North Project feasibility study that is currently underway. Sincerely, Marcia Thompson. Go to administration for support, anything to add?
Just to indicate to me obviously that the, the Main Street North feasibility study that is currently underway should be in its final stages over the next month or so. So it's something that we can continue discussions with the province of Manitoba on.
Any other questions for council? Counselor Ellis?
I just think this is indicative of what happened last week with the premier, the premier and ministers were in town, and we had put forward a request to meet as a council, and this was, this was refused. Again, we were asking the Health, the Minister of Health, Seniors, and Active Living for a meeting, and it's being referred to someone else in the department. So it's just something that I would, I would hope as soon as we get that report from about our Main Street North project that a meeting with the minister would be forthcoming.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to resolutions. If there's no other questions. Thank you. Resolution, we're going to 7.1. Resolution to approve the executive staff terms and conditions. We have a memo from the Human Resource Manager. Resolution 2018161, moved by Counselor Ellis, second by Deputy Mayor Smoak. Be resolved the council approved the executive staff terms and conditions effective July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. We'll go to administration to support. Anything to add?
On an annual basis, the executive staff terms and conditions are presented and reviewed to mayor and council. As such, they're being brought forward with very minor proposed changes, reclassification of two positions, and some housekeeping changes. So the resolution coming forward has been endorsed by the HR Committee to approve the terms and conditions with those amendments.
We'll go to the mover, Counselor Ellis.
As Chair, the HR Committee is supporting this. Our reclassification of our two positions, the pool manager moving, moving up one, moving up one classification, that just reflects that position's scope of responsibility in terms of supervising staff. The other, the other, this has happened over the term of our council. The Director of Public Works is seeing a great deal of responsibility added to his portfolio with, with the landfill site being taken over by the city, as well as water treatment plant, and then the changes made at the sewage treatment plant. So I'm in, I'm in full favor of this.
Questions? Counsel Madichuk.
I'll be voting against this resolution. Quite simply, one of the directors will be getting, getting an increase on this of approximately $13,500. That's a lot of money when we should be looking at austerity. We gave away $10.2 million. Somewhere, we have to reflect on our spending. That is not happening. Instead, we're positioning people at the trough, better positions, a little closer to the feed.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Wong.
Yes, I, I look into this terms and condition. I find a few things I'd like to address. First of all, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to section 11 and 12. The 11 is termination. The department head may be suspended by the mayor. I'd like to make a friendly amendment and city council or city manager. Department head may be discharged by the mayor and city council on the recommendation. So those are the two things I'd like to amend from that section. Number 12, vehicle, subsection A, second paragraph. No city-owned vehicle should be driven outside the limit of the city of Thompson without authority of the mayor and city council. I'd like to add that too, too. Okay, now come to section 14. A question on section 14. When have we changed the TRCC to VRCC? Now we need to change it back to VTRCC. Not that I'm aware of for the last two, three years in my term. So I want to get the clarification. Another thing I'd like to address is, out of the 22 administration staff, out of the 22, we only had five positioned that status, the qualification, which is knowledge or education. The rest, from the city manager all the way to the human resource clerk, don't have any qualifications stated. I would like to put in the perspective called, what you call a consistency. So if you want to put this into a terms and condition, every single position should have the qualification there. Why is only five, not the rest? So the five is only included is executive assistant to the mayor and city council have the qualifications stated there. Assistant, executive assistant to the city manager has the qualification there. The city communication officer have that. The EDO has that. And also some sort of director of recreation park and culture have some sort of, they call a desire, desire qualification. And the rest, when I look at this, that means anybody can apply the job without any qualification. So I'd like to put it in the perspective, can we have all this amended?
From Counsel Wong is to amend the terms and conditions as been presented. I would look to council for direction in regards to whether or not to accept the amendments.
Then also I'd like to have a record, please.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Smoak.
We were all given these job descriptions, and we could have brought forward any questions that we had prior to tonight's meeting. We had in red writing what were the changes going to be made. I would appreciate if you would have made your changes at that time. We all had the copy. We all had the copy, sir.
For me to ask for amendment?
No.
Okay. I'm just wanting to make sure that everybody on the same page.
The question has been asked for amendments to the terms and conditions. I need direction from council whether council, by consensus, is willing to consider the amendments. Council, by show of hands, are you in favor of considering the amendments to the terms and conditions? No, I need, he's asked for an amendment. Okay? So all those in favor of considering amendments to the terms and conditions as proposed by Duncan Wong? Opposed? Okay. So his amendments have not been. Now Counselor Byer.
I'm not sure there's any point. I'll make a suggestion. Counselor Wong raised some good suggestions, something to think about. This is a document that is reviewed annually, so I would like to suggest that these considerations be put on the table at the next annual review so that it's not lost.
Counsel Foley.
Up an hour ago when we went over this exact document in another meeting.
Part of the process in bringing forth changes to the executive terms and conditions that this document has circulated to all of council for comments, and be corrected if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that we would have received any written comments back from, from council when this was circulated.
Would have only been sent to the HR Committee, not the whole of council.
Counsel Wong.
What is it different?
Excuse me?
What is it different by addressing now or before an hour ago? I just want to understand this logic about this.
Okay, so just, just to be clear, so the general public isn't confused, we had an in-camera meeting previous to this meeting. I can't discuss the subjects within that, but I can say in the broadest terms that the document was discussed and there were no issues raised at that time. So now we're in a public meeting and these issues have come to light, and it's the consensus of council not to consider the amendments that Counselor Wong has made. It is the consensus of council, as Counsel Byer has proposed, that they be noted at the next review of the terms and conditions for consideration. So with that, I'll go to, I'll call the question in a recorded, oh, sorry. Yeah, absolutely. Counsel Collada.
No, I, on the reclassifications, we only have two months left in this term, and I believe that they should come forward after the election, especially the pool, and it's been the same classification for, for 40 years. And at this time, I just don't think it's appropriate to be reclassifying positions. So I would like to see that, see those reclassifications come forward early in the next term.
Counsel Valentino.
In speaking to the resolution, I'll be supporting the proposed changes, the reclassification of the Norplex Pool Manager position, and the justification in the memo, and when you read the job description, I think it warrants it, and the reclassification of the Director of Public Works position. Obviously, with the added duties with the wastewater treatment plant coming on board, us taking over the water treatment plant and the waste disposal grounds, reclassifying that Director of Public Works position is at the right time. Remember, this is on an annual basis. The annual time is up to go through this, and it's now till, going to go till June 30th of 2019. And some of the mining housekeeping changes that were discussed with us previous, I'm fine with, so I'll definitely be supporting this as is.
With that, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Voting in favor, Counselor Byer, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Foley, Counselor Collada, Deputy Mayor Smoak, sorry, Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smoak, Mayor Fenske voting opposed, Counselor Madichuk. Mayor Fenske voting opposed, Counselor Matichuk, Counselor Wong, Counselor Collada. It's carried. Now moving on to seven point two, a resolution to approve the executive staff wage increase. And there's a memo from the city manager. Resolution two zero one eight one six two, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Deputy Mayor Smook. Whereas the City of Thompson wished to maintain a workforce of executive staff that are fairly compensated for their work, now therefore be resolved, the council approved the one point two five percent salary increase for the period of July first, two thousand and eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, for executive staff. We'll go to administration for support.
Denote that this is also an annual resolution that's brought forth for council consideration. This has mirrored the increase to the United Steelworkers increase, and has gone ongoing for a number of years. This is money that has been budgeted for in the budget, of which council has approved.
Thank you. I'll move to the mover, Counselor Ellis.
Yeah, I'm in support of this. I'd like to stress that this is, this is part of our current budget, right? So this money is, this isn't new money. It also speaks to, you know, giving this, it also, we've done this the last three years, so this is consistent with what our practice is during our term. And it's a part of our retention and recruitment efforts, right? So I'm in support.
Council questions? Counselor Matichuk.
I want to remind council that in the past year, we formed a committee that negotiated or didn't negotiate a very bad G I L. We are losing ten million dollars over four years. It makes no sense that we're getting, giving executives raises at this time. Am I missing something? Is this a departing gift to our executive? Something's missing here. I'm not getting it.
Counsel Wong.
Thank you. I believe, first of all, I'd like to ask the question, is the administration executive staff is unionized? It's not? Okay. So if it's not unionized, I strongly suggest or believe should be based on merit individually, not at the whole. When you increase, doesn't matter, you do a good job, a bad job, you all get increased across the board, okay? So another thing is, the person who write the memos recommended for the increase. At the end of the day, if the increase is affected to his bottom line, which is he got the increase, will it consider the conflicts or interests?
You can't penalize the messenger for doing the job of the city manager and presenting. Excuse me, you asked a question. I'm clarifying. This is not a conflict of interest. This is the duty of the city manager to bring information to council. Because he signs the memo, has no effect in regards to the content of the memo. He's presenting information to council on behalf of administration.
That's fine, since this is the explanation. So do we have, can the city manager prove to council or the public that he done his due diligence by assessment individual staff, or all twenty-two, twenty-one staff under him, under his administration, that qualify or any piece of document that he can prove that he done all the assessment from individually, that, what you call that, entitled for the increasement?
To clarify for the general public and to remind council of the last three years that the policy has been to negotiate a contract with the unionized staff of steelworkers. And in July or August of each year, to bring forth a memo reflecting the increase or status quo or decrease that is negotiated with the unionized staff for the executive staff. That's been the practice the last three years that this council approved on an annual basis. So again, this is the fourth year of our mandate. This is the fourth time we brought this forward based on the past practice of whatever the settlement was for the unionized staff. This is also discussed during our budget deliberations. As Counselor Ellis has outlined, this is a budgeted line item that council is well aware of, and that approved the budget as containment of the one point two five increase. This is the formalization of that practice. So from that perspective, this is a normal practice that's presented to council on behalf of the H R committee by the city manager, as has been done the last three years. Counselor Byer. Counselor Byer.
I'm not finished.
I'll be voting in favor of this. As it has been pointed out, this was decided basically during our budget deliberations. There are other reasons besides the fact that we've been doing this for probably Counselor Collada can give a better figure than I can, but for almost generations of councils now. But there's morale issue as well. We are expecting our executive staff to put more time and effort into helping us with the very difficult years we've got coming ahead of us. And if we're going to be expecting more effort, I think one point two five percent, which is probably not enough to buy them a breakfast somewhere at the end of the day, it's very a small, very small token to help as an incentive, or incentive's not the right word, but to show our appreciation. I do have the feeling, there's other instances where we've approved things in the budget, and it's had to come forward as resolution, and it hasn't required or hasn't resulted in such heated debate as we've seen here. And I think it's just because we're talking about executive salaries, and I think that's really unfair. The amount of work and effort that our executive puts in, the hours, the paperwork, I certainly, definitely very much appreciate it. But you know, one other small thing, it wasn't that many months ago, a resolution came forward, and I believe we were increasing the amount we were paying somebody to do a service for us by over fifty percent. It was passed unanimously by this very same group, who is saying we should be cutting costs, saving money, and everything else. So I think for consistency's sake, we should stop and think back to how we voted on issues in the past, and where this lines up with our philosophies moving forward.
Other counselors? Counselor Collada.
Your worship. Yes, I, we deliberated on our budget for months, and all counselors won some and lost some. And the one point two five percent was approved in the budget, and I did support our budget. I certainly did. And I do appreciate our staff. I really do. However, every time we go into a union contract, we've, the previous year or the previous budget year, we've given our executive staff a raise, and then we go in and we want to reduce, and it's very difficult. We have to start at some point in time. And certainly at this point in time, we have to be watching our money. One point two five percent isn't a lot. It amounts to, I think, thirteen thousand dollars, which are less than thirteen thousand. But when are we going to start? I think we have to start now, and I won't be supporting it. And it has nothing to do with me not appreciating staff. I have every appreciation for our staff, and I believe we have a good staff. But we have to start at some point in time to budget more smartly. I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Valentino.
Yeah, I'll speak to this a little bit if I could, please. And first off, I'll definitely be supporting this. I did the financial statement analysis presentation tonight. I told you tomorrow to the public, you're going to see the financial plan online. These numbers are already in there. So this is already money that we planned for. We're not just sitting around tonight deciding we're giving a raise. We already budgeted for this. We've already had our statements audited, submitted to the province. This is just the housekeeping for the annual review for these people. The money's already been accounted for. It bothers me greatly that four years in, we review this annually, and somebody, a counselor asks, are they unionized? Really? You should know by now where we're at and how the budget process works. This is money identified in our budget already. This is just the housekeeping for the annual review for the executive staff terms and conditions. We've already reduced the positions from twenty-two to twenty-one. We've done our due diligence in that regard. We also had a meeting with our employees when we do the budget process on April the twenty-fifth. We met with them twice. We had counselors that did not show up. I think we will know who didn't. So I guess they did miss something, because this money has already been identified, and I'll definitely be supporting it.
Thank you. Any other counselors that haven't spoken yet? Counsel, Deputy Mayor Smook.
Yes, I will definitely be supporting this. It's one point two five percent in this day and age, and with Thompson in its economic doom and gloom out there in the world, as we're trying to attract people to Thompson. Just the fact we're having this conversation, the morale goes down in our units. The morale goes down when we're starting to hire people. If we want to have a discussion like this, it's when we're in budget. And then we talk about, last year, we talked about giving all employees ten days off. We could have saved half a million dollars, not thirteen. We fought for our employees. We fought to keep our unionized employees. I feel we should be doing the same thing for our executive staff. We have eliminated, as Kathy says, one position. We've got a few other positions that now are getting different pay because they've been reclassified. We've definitely done some cost savings, and if anybody wants to call me after, please feel free. Thank you.
Counselor Matichuk.
I just want to speak to what Counselor Wong had mentioned about merit-based. And we already have the merit-based component in there, and that's how they set the rate that the executive staff are getting paid. But they seem to get the best of all worlds. And Duncan did mention, are they unionized? And if they aren't unionized, why are they following a union agreement? Is the point he was trying to make, but he was shut down. That happens a lot here when Mr. Wong has something to say.
We can all hear. Counselor Wong.
May I be appreciated if you let me finish when I speak, not to put my hand so many times to finish up my comment, okay?
You have the floor. Please proceed.
Thank you. So for the last four years, let me make myself clear. I always vote against this, and also I don't agree the system you all running as, you don't use it, you lose it. Yes, it's in the budget. It doesn't mean you gotta waste it or use it when it's not needed. So those are the philosophy. I have problem with that. Record of vote, please.
Just before we go to a recorded vote, I would like to speak on behalf of this issue as well. And I want to remind council, and there's been some misremembering, I guess, to use President Bush's words, in regards to the budget process. And that we talk about austerity, and we talk about trying to save costs, and we got to start now. We should have started four years ago. We have gone through four budgets, and each budget, we've had discussions in regards to cuts. And each budget, most recently, the last negotiations with the unionized staff, this council gave direction of a parameter of a wage increase for unionized staff. And now you're balking at the amount that was provided to the unionized staff for the salaried staff. So in hindsight, why did we provide one point two five or higher as a room to negotiate with the union? Why didn't we say zero? Why didn't we do that when we negotiated the contract? Excuse me, I have the, excuse me, I have the floor. Thank you very much. Counselor Matichuk, I give you the same respect. So at the same time, coincidence that we're shortly coming up to an election. And coincidentally, memories are forgotten. Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Smook mentioned, we had an opportunity, this council, to look hard in the mirror and save half a million dollars by offering, by saying to the, to all members of the staff that we are going to require you to take ten days off to save half a million dollars. This council chose to go in the other direction. And that's the decision of council. That's fine. But understand, on one hand, you said, no, we don't want to save twenty-five, or five hundred thousand dollars, but now we want to make a big issue out of thirteen thousand dollars. You can't have it both ways. So yeah, austerity-wise, yeah, we should be saving money where we can. But let's not cherry pick. Let's try to be fair to everyone. We're picking on twenty-one employees just to score points before an election. What we should have done is save five hundred thousand dollars a year ago and affected all employees. But that's water under the bridge. But moving forward, council will have to make decisions between, and I hate to hear this, wait until the next council. We are counselors now. We are receiving pay now. Unless you all want to give up your pay for the next two and a half months, we have decisions to make right up to the election. So let's buckle down, do our job till the election. And the next council can move on and do, make their decisions. But we do not defer for the next council just because we're eight weeks or nine weeks out from an election. Let's do our job. In a recorded vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Voting in favor, Counselor Byer, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Foley, Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smook, Mayor Fenske, voting opposed, Counselor Matichuk, Counselor Wong, Counselor Collada. It's carried. Seven point three, a resolution to approve the Comstream Gigalinks Inc. Right-Away Easement Agreements. We have a map and a memo attached. Resolution two zero one eight one seven six, moved by Counselor Byer, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Whereas the Comstream Gigalinks Inc. Comstream upgraded and installed fiber optic cables in the City of Thompson on Lot Six and Twelve Block, one seventy-five Plan Eight Four Seven P L T O N Division, and Public Reserve Plan Eight Five One P L T O N Division, as per file number P nine seven eight eight three zero eight. And whereas the installation of underground conduit cables requires use of the City of Thompson's right-of-way is referred to as an agreement, file number P nine seven eight eight three oh eight, tracks zero one seven A, zero one seven B, and zero two zero C. Now therefore be resolved, the council approved the Comstream Gigalinks Inc. Right-Away Easement Agreement, file number P nine seven eight eight three oh eight, tracks zero one seven A, zero one seven B, and zero two zero C. Go to administration for support. Anthony?
Comstream Gigalinks has been retained by the school district of Mystery Lake to install fiber optic lines along Thompson Drive into the Westwood area to enhance their telephone and internet services between the school district board office, the Westwood School, and Artie Parker Collegiate. They've listed it as a priority project. An application for excavation permit has been signed and submitted by Comstream Gigalinks to the city. Administration has reviewed the specifics of the easement and have no concerns with the request.
I'll go to the mover, Counselor Byer. Thank you. Council, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carry on answering. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve attendance at the Provincial Municipal Justice Advisory Committee memo, and we have a memo from the executive assistant. Resolution two zero one eight one seven seven, moved by Deputy Mayor Smook, seconded by Counselor Valentino. Be resolved, the council approved the attendance of Mayor Fenske at the Provincial Municipal Justice Advisory Committee in Winnipeg on September seventh, two thousand and eighteen. And be further resolved, the attendance of this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw eighteen ninety-seven dash two zero one three. Go to administration for support. Anything to add?
The mayor's attendance at this committee meeting is five hundred and thirty-four dollars and seven cents.
Our meetings with the R C M P.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Counsel Wong.
Kind of, to me, it's kind of off the normal practice for A M M when they're sending the representative on behalf of A M M. Usually, they pay for all the expenses. We do not need to do anything. But occasionally, like, not occasionally, lately, I've been seeing a lot of those activity that mayor yourself going out of town, and we have to prepay ourselves and then reimburse us. So why the practice being changed? That's question one. Number two, do we get, can I, can I get a copy of the reimbursement from A M M that proven that pay us back?
Two-part question. The first question, this has been the practice since I've been appointed to the committee, that we pay upfront and submit the invoices to A M M, and they reimburse us for those costs, and we can certainly get the reimbursement checks from A M M forwarded to you for your review. Any other questions? Counsel Matichuk.
I'd like to know why we're paying per diem for someone that lives in the city of Winnipeg.
Sadly mistaken. My residence is sixty-four Gold Eye, if you don't know. Thank you. Nice try. Nice try. Very classy. Any other questions? Hearing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Next, we have a resolution to approve attendance at the city caucus meeting and a memo from the executive assistants. Resolution two zero one eight one seven eight, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Deputy Mayor Smook. Be resolved, the council approved the attendance of Mayor Fenske and Anthony McGinnis with Director of Development Services at the city's caucus meeting in Flintflawn on September nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And be further resolved, the attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw eighteen ninety-seven two zero one of bylaw eighteen ninety-seven two zero one three. Go to administration for support. Anything to add?
Just dedicate the attendance of the mayor and Director of Development Services at the city's caucus in Flintflon as four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents. The Director of Development Services costs are coming out of his budget.
Thank you. Uh, go to the mover, Counsel Valentino. Thank you, council, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All in favor? It's Carrie, now, just, thank you. Resolution to approve additional costs to Simco Refrigeration for repair of the CA Nesbit Brine Line and a memo from the Acting Director of Recreation Parks Culture. Resolution two zero one eight one seven nine, moved by Counsel Foley, seconded by Counsel Byer. Whereas council passed Resolution number two zero one eight zero three four, approved to sole sourcing with Simco Refrigeration to fix the CA Nesbit Arena Brine Line at a cost not to exceed twenty-two thousand plus applicable taxes. And whereas January twenty-fourth, the temporary repair to the brine line broke and Simco was contacted to do an emergency repair. And now therefore, council approved the additional costs of eleven thousand four hundred twenty-one, all applicable taxes included, over and above the awarded contract prices for the project. Go to administration for support. Anything to add?
Just dedicate that the additional costs are really the primary result of, uh, of having to get Simco up in an emergency situation as opposed to the scheduled fixed date that was first negotiated.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go to the mover, Counsel Foley.
Uh, just that, going back in the previous conversation. As regard to this issue, the reason why we had to make it an emergency was due to the fact of the upcoming Manitoba Winter Games and we needed to ensure that we had ample time to make sure the repairs were done. I, however, would like to state that, uh, I'm slightly disappointed that it took this many months to get this come here, but clearly, that's a representation of why we no longer have the Director of Recreation Parks.
Uh, council, any questions? Counsel Wong.
A few question. First of all, when they come earlier, did they complete the whole entire job the same time?
Yes, they did.
It means they make use of the opportunity to finish the contract that we give it to them, so where's the overtime occurred at?
The overtime occurred because when they originally budgeted, it was for Monday to Friday to have it fixed. But when we ended up getting them, they came the, the next day and they worked until it was done, so that's where the overtime incurred, was incurred.
Okay, when there's an overrun budget, practice, they're supposed to ask to approve before we do that. This is six months later. Why does it wait till six months to ask for the extra?
They put the bill in right away for it.
And why is not addressed? We allocate the budget for twenty-two thousand. Now it's eleven thousand more. Under the law, you must bring it to the council to approve that. No? To address this, like way back then?
To indicate, as, uh, has been identified at, at council, uh, this bill was likely sitting with the Director of Recreation and Community Services and wasn't brought forth. It is a bill the city of Thompson must pay because we've incurred the cost. And the transparency and accountability is bringing forth the, uh, this as a resolution in tonight's meeting.
Any other questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? We have a, uh, a resolution to approve taxes added, Appendix AB two dash one eight. Resolution two zero one eight one eight zero, moved by Counsel Valentino, seconded by Counsel Byer. Whereas Section three twenty-six, Bracket One of Municipal Act provides authority for municipality to correct its tax rule in respect of a property and impose supplementary taxes if after the tax rule has been completed, the assessor reports to the municipality that, A, the property is liable to taxation but was not assessed, B, the property is liable to taxation due to the change in ownership or use, C, the assessment of an improvement on the property requires an increase due to the change in physical condition of the improvement, D, a change has been made in the classification of a property under the Municipal Assessment Act or a regulation under the act, or E, the land has been improved on or subdivided. Now therefore be resolved, the council authorizes Chief Financial Officer to make additions to the two thousand and eighteen real property tax rule as certified by the assessor on the additions to the tax rule attached heretofore as Appendix AB two dash one eight. Go to administration for support. Anything to add? Seeing nothing, we'll go to Counselor Valentino as the mover.
We see, and it comes through the Finance and Admin Committee.
Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie, you can ask me. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve taxes canceled, Appendix B three eighteen, Appendix B four eighteen, Appendix B five eighteen. Resolution two zero one eight one eight one, moved by Counsel Foley, seconded by Counsel Byer. Be resolved, pursuant to the authority provided in Section three hundred, Bracket six point one of the Municipal Act, council hereby authorizes the cancellation of taxes heretofore as the Appendix B three dash one eight, B four one eight, and B five one eight. We'll go to administration for support. Anything to add?
As well as a housekeeping resolution that for, comes forth when we're notified by assessment of any changes.
Thank you. Uh, go to the mover, Counsel Foley. Anything to add? Uh, council, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All in favor? Carrie, you can ask me. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the Ash Flight Program. We have the tabulation of prices and a memo from Director of Development Services. Resolution two zero one eight one eight two, moved by Counsel Foley, seconded by Counsel Byer. Be resolved, the council approved the recommendation of the purchasing agent to award the tender for the two thousand and eighteen Ash Flight Program to SM Industries Limited for their tendered price of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-four and eighty, eighty cents, all taxes included as per tender file number one two eight one eight. Go to administration for support. Anything to add? Anthony?
In the past years, the city has undertaken a roadway crack sealing program. Um, the program was not undertaken in two thousand and seventeen. Because of the, uh, serious winters we've had the past few years, we've seen a deterioration in a number of the roadways. Money or funds were identified, uh, through the budget process for, uh, street sweeping equipment rental, which is no longer required due to replacement. And administration brought forward that the funds could be diverted to a crack sealing program. Only one bid was received when the tender was put out and the project cost was over the amount that we had budgeted by three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six. Administration has therefore identified additional funds from another operational budget line which can accommodate the additional costs.
Go to the mover, Counsel Foley. Council, any questions? Counsel Madichuk.
I'm disappointed that so often, we can only get a single bidder on these things. Perhaps we have to look at the way we're putting it out there because the message is not getting out there that we got work.
Are there options?
What? There's no people out there. Are we going directly to them, asking if they're interested? Not just posting Thompson Citizen. Most people don't read the Thompson Citizen in Manitoba.
There is, or you can seep toe.
To Counselor Madichuk's query, uh, we are looking at adding it to, uh, a variety of the websites, even though that, there are some of the trigger amounts. But add them regardless, that's to see what we get back. Because unfortunately, we are at times sort of stuck with sort of that one, uh, one bid that comes in and which, uh, at times may not, may or may not be, uh, financially advantageous for the city of Thompson.
Any other questions? Counsel Valentino.
Supporting this, but only because administration found the identified money in the operational budget line. I think that was, uh, good work in doing that, so it will come in, come in on budget. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Counsel Byer.
I had to ask, actually, at a previous meeting, why it was important that we do this this year? And if there's other people like me who don't understand, I mean, we all understand that we've got a lot of issues with our roads. But if you don't, don't get the seals cracked, uh, the water and the, the freeze and thaw that occurs when water gets into the cracks and into the base of the road creates even larger problems. So I want to thank you for the person who gave me the explanation of why it's important to do it, especially this year. It's been a very wet year, so it's important, I think, we do it this year.
Yes, um, as far as tenders, they do a lot of different websites. It may get harder and less tender for us if they see us trashing our local businesses and council chambers after we have agreed and they've sent bills to us to pay.
Council, any other questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie, you can ask me. Thank you. Resolution to approve AMM lobby, the province of Manitoba, not to proceed with plans to transition the municipal road and bridge program into Phase Two of Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. We have a memo from the city manager. Uh, Resolution two zero one eight one eight three, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Counsel Valentino. Whereas the province of Manitoba has made two point two five million available to municipalities in two thousand and eighteen for the final year of municipal road and bridge program. And whereas fourteen million was available to municipalities in two thousand and seventeen through the municipal road and bridge program. And whereas the municipal road and bridge program was developed in partnership with the Association of Manitoba's, Manitoba Municipalities, AMM, and provides fifty-fifty cost-sharing funding for municipal road and bridge projects through a single window application intake with, with no red tape. And whereas the Manitoba municipalities regard the municipal road and bridge program as critical, predictable, and effective for budgeting and planning purposes in order to address their infrastructure deficit. And now therefore be resolved, that AMM lobby, the province of Manitoba, to not proceed with plans to transition the municipal road and, uh, bridge program into Phase Two of the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, ICIP two, and to fully reinstate the former funding levels for this essential program. Go to administration for support.
Yeah, so we dedicated, obviously, is the, the memo is pretty self-explanatory. Uh, I've had a number of discussions with AMM, uh, who have been in contact with other municipalities and, and their issues that they're having with the reduction or elimination of the municipal road and bridge program, uh, in two thousand and nineteen. I mean, obviously, the funding levels have been reduced substantially. Uh, province of Manitoba, obviously, are tying everything into the, uh, the federal municipal, federal provincial, uh, Investing in Canada program. As part of that, the unfortunate thing is, uh, subsequent to, uh, the Investing in Canada program, uh, there was a Build Canada program, which really was the same thing, it's just a different name. Uh, and the municipal road and bridge program was in existence likely for five years. So the elimination of this program will have dramatic impacts, uh, on a number of municipalities. City of Thompson, as identified previously, uh, has, uh, been subject to a fifty percent reduction of what we were, uh, normally get as an allocation for this program. And as a fact of that two hundred thousand dollar reduction, uh, we will have to reduce the scope of work on our paving projects this year.
Uh, go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoak.
One other reason why it's so important for us to meet with the ministers. And when we were promised from last October that the premier would be meeting with us, we just want to make sure we're updating him face-to-face, not just through his ministers and what's happening in Thompson. It's very important that we meet the ministers and lobby for Thompson to keep these, and AMM is a great lobbyist on our behalf.
Council, any questions? Uh, Counsel Valentino.
I would, I'll be supporting this. I would ask that Mayor Fenske and Mr. McGinnis try to bring this up also at your September nineteenth meeting at the Fall Cities Caucus Meetings in Flintflon.
Uh, we'll also bring it up, uh, on Wednesday at the, uh, NACC meetings. Minister Wharton and Minister, Minister Clark will be there as well, so we'll raise it with Minister Wharton. Any other questions? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie, you can ask me. Thank you. Uh, next, we have a resolution to approve the contract between the city of Thompson and Wayne Kowerski, and we have a memo from the HR manager. Resolution two zero one eight one eight four, moved by Counsel Valentino, seconded by Counsel Ellis. Be resolved, the council approve entering into contract with Wayne Kowerski to provide management support services as facilities manager for the city of Thompson. Uh, go to administration for support.
We had an opportunity that, uh, in order to fill, uh, temporarily, uh, a need for services in, in the rec department with the, uh, with the two vacancies that we've been presented with, uh, near the end of July. Uh, the, the hiring of Wayne Kowerski, the former employer of the city of Thompson, uh, is a good fit as to sort of knowing what, uh, is happening with the city of Thompson and provides us that interim, uh, interim position until, uh, director and facility manager positions are filled, uh, within the city.
Counsel Valentino, as a mover?
I'll be supporting this, and obviously, it was a bit of a time crunch with the ice plant having to be turned on. They needed some familiarity down there.
Counsel Clara.
Wasn't any copy of the contract on our information on our computers? And there's none on the information that I picked up here tonight? So we have no financial information? So I'm, I'm well aware that Mr. Kowerski is already working, so I suggest we table this until we have the information. We're not in the habit of approving contact, uh, contracts with no financial information.
Yeah, we have a motion to table, uh, that's non-debatable. I need a second here for the motion. Counsel Byer. All those in favor? Opposed? It's defeated. Uh, Mr. Sepatelli.
Council does have a copy, uh, of the background information on that, uh, on all net. It's, it's there, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? Counsel Madichuk.
I'd like to know what his qualifications are to have him heading up this department.
He does have the qualifications in, uh, in leading, uh, a department with over forty years' service with the city of Thompson.
Thank you, Counsel Wong.
Okay, forty years' service, but, uh, what I'm asking, like, what Ron Madichuk asking is about the qualification for this department. So does he have any knowledge about this department when it comes to making ice, operating the Zimboni or whatever, like, to direct the people to make it right? And also, is this position being posted for hiring people?
So to indicate, in my previous comments, uh, Mr. Kowerski has been hired interim until the filling of the two vacant positions. So yes, the two vacant positions have been posted. Uh, in, in regards to the qualifications, Mr. Kowerski has been a supervisor for many years with the city of Thompson and providing services to residents of the city of Thompson. So he is more than adequate and qualified to lead, uh, the necessary personnel at the rec department in order to ensure that we are, uh, getting facilities up and ready for public use.
Do we approach him or he comes? When they approach us, when they see the post?
Just to clarify, you're confusing two things. The positions have been posted and advertised as, as vacant, okay? In the interim, knowing that that would take time to fill the positions, knowing that we're under a time crunch to have the ice installed in the CA Nesbit Arena, it was imperative that we have a qualified supervisor of staff in place. The city of Thompson approached Mr. Kowerski, uh, to see if he'd be interested in a contract basis to fulfill that position.
Asking because it's a different, if he approached or we approached, it's a totally different scenario. So that means we go out, we go to him and say, can you, can you, uh, so why him? There's so many other people out there that can, if we approach people, why can't we approach some other people? There's more people working in that department that probably qualify for the operation part and all that. And in my opinion, when, when out of sudden, we let go too high position from the same department, the city managers will step in until we find something.
To clarify, thank, thank you, thank you, Counsel. The city manager's role is to ensure that we are fully staffed and, uh, not open to, to unsafe work practice or, or, uh, qualified people being in the right positions. Uh, it, it is a little, uh, far-reaching to expect the city manager, amongst all his duties, to step in as the Director of Recreation. It was identified, uh, through, and again, this is the role of the city manager administration. It's not the role of council. It's the role of administration. Once the retire, retirement of a facilities manager and the dismissal of a recreation director created a void in leadership, it was identified that an experienced leader should be identified to, in the short interim while we fill these two positions, be put in place to ensure that the user groups that will be using the facilities will have full access to the ice on a timely basis. The most qualified person and recent employee of the city of Thompson is Wayne Kowerski. Therefore, he was approached to fill that position. He accepted that position. The contract was offered. That's why we have a resolution before us. Uh, Counsel Byer.
This, uh, Mr. Kowerski, in his forty years, has also worked closely with the Recreation Department. He would have, I would believe, a, a fairly intimate knowledge of how the Recreation Department works. Plus, he's got good staff to support him. All they need is the direct, the, uh, the supervision and support. I, I just want to point out thing, um, city manager, uh, Gary Sepatelli was correct. The contract is in our all net, but I don't know about other people. Mine is locked. I couldn't open it. There's even a little lock there and I just couldn't open it on my all nets, so.
And ensure that's available. Uh, any other questions or comments? Counsel Madichuk. Thank you. Uh, with that, we'll call the question. With that, we'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Voting in favor, Counsel Byer, Counsel Ellis, Counsel Foley, Counsel Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smook, Mayor Fenske voting opposed. Counsel Madichuk, Counsel Wong, Counsel Clotta. We now have the added resolution from the Nishuasiaak Cree Nation. This is Resolution two zero one eight, one eight seven, moved by Counsel Byer, seconded by Counsel Ellis. Whereas on July thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, the Mystery Lake Motor, Mystery Lake Motor Hotel lands, legally described as Parcells A and B, Plan Number five three two zero, PLTO, N Division, and Parcel A, Plan Number four nine five eight, PLTO, N Division, was registered in Portage Land Title Office officially designating the said property as urban reserve under the Indian Act. And whereas the designation of Mystery Lake Motor Hotel lands as urban reserve under the Indian Act necessitates the need to amend the existing Municipal Services, Municipal Development and Services Agreement to address service charges in lieu of the City of Thompson's Accommodation Tax Baila Obligations and other ancillary issues. And whereas the City of Thompson and the Nishuasiaak Cree Nation, NCN, has been in discussions regarding the applicability of the city's Accommodation Tax Baila on the Mystery Lake Motor Hotel lands and have agreed on an interim solution for the payment of a portion of said charges in lieu. And whereas NCN has agreed to provide a one-time payment equalling a hundred percent of the non-indigenous purchases or services from July thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, to March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, and will consider further arrangements in relation to revisions of the Municipal Development and Services Agreement moving forward. And now, and now therefore be it resolved that City of Thompson approve the one-time payment equalling a hundred percent of the non-indigenous purchases of a service from July thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, to March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, from NCN, and continue discussions with the NCN to amend the Municipal Development Services Agreement to establish a long-term solution to the payment in lieu of charges for outstanding and future amounts of the Accommodation Tax Obligations. Go to Administration for support.
To indicate that this is sort of the culmination of reaching out to, to NCN to, once they were, or the Mystery Lake Hotel properties were identified as urban reserve officially in July of two thousand sixteen, to ensure that the appropriate changes to the Municipal Development and Services Act were undertaken to deal with the Accommodation Tax Obligations that businesses in the City of Thompson, or applicable businesses in the City of Thompson face. So this one here is really the, the agreement from an interim solution by NCN Cree Nation to sort of pay the, the non, non-indigenous occupants or purchasers of service of a hundred percent for that July, July two thousand sixteen to March of two thousand eighteen process, with the understanding that discussions will continue to make the appropriate amendments to the Municipal Development and Services Agreement and to determine what the Accommodation Tax or whatever it's called is, is addressed moving forward.
Go to the mover, Counsel Byer.
I'll be supporting this, and I, I think this is a wonderful expression of good faith. NCN is facing an election, and I, I think it's timely, appropriate, and as I said, in good faith on the part of NCN to be taking this initiative now. And I think it just bodes well for our future relationship as we move forward with further discussions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to declare conflicts of interest because I have direct financial benefit from this organization.
Flicked and left the chambers. Any other questions from Counsel? Just wait for him to leave. Counsel Madichuk.
I have one question. I noticed on our calendar that these are meetings with Chief Moody and counselors, but on our side, it's our chief but not our counselors. Is there a reason why any of us counselors are not included in the meetings?
Deputy Mayor Smook has been included, and the Financial Chairperson, Counsel Valentino has been included, plus staff, and myself. Mr. Sepatelli.
To indicate, I mean, obviously, it's the, with the Finance and Admin, which is tasked with this. But I mean, obviously, it's in the Counsel calendar, and any Counselor can attend if they so choose.
Any other questions? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie, you can ask me. Thank you. Can we ask Counsel Wong to come back, please? Moving on to bylaws, we have the second reading of bylaw nineteen seventy-two, two zero one eight, Financial Assistance Baila Amendment. We have the bylaw itself and a memo from Director of Development Services. Resolution two zero one eight, one eight five, moved by Counsel Byer, seconded by Counsel Ellis. Be resolved, the bylaw nineteen seventy-two dash two zero one eight being a bylaw of the City of Thompson, amend bylaw nineteen fifty-five dash two zero one seven being a bylaw of the City of Thompson to create a financial assistance program through tax and service fee abatement for the purpose of encouraging and assisting in redevelopment and new construction of certain buildings on certain properties in and around the city, including First Nations land, be given a second greeting. Go to the Administration for support. Anthony?
Bylaw number nineteen fifty-five, two thousand seventeen was created to encourage redevelopment and new construction in certain properties around the city, including First Nation lands. The current bylaw only applies to owners zoned in commercial, commercial residential or residential with five or more dwellings, as noted in three point oh three C of the bylaw. It was noted to us that the language used in crafting the original bylaw unintentionally excluded business redevelopment in the industrial zones of the city. So amending this bylaw will also address this, as well as a few other minor typographical errors.
Mover, Counsel Byer. Oh, sorry.
After that, we did the first reading on July sixteenth at the regular meeting of Counsel. There's opportunity right now for the second reading, and with no objections, a further third reading.
Okay, Counsel Byer.
I'll be supporting this, and I'm rather proud that we are part of a, of initiative to help promote economic development in the City of Thompson.
Counsel Wong.
Supporting this, but I'd like to make another friendly amendment to the, for the applicant. If they have outstanding balance, whether it's a tax or anything, they should not be qualified. How are you going to put it there? I think it's a valid point.
Context is that if an applicant has an outstanding balance owing the City of Thompson, is that correct? They should not be qualified, so we would consider that as a friendly amendment. I would look to Counsel for direction on that. I see a consensus of that. So wording would be added to reflect that if a applicant has an outstanding bill or invoice or debt to the City of Thompson, that they would not be qualified to apply for this. We'll write that into the amendment as a friendly amendment. With that given, we've gone to Counsel Byer. Mr. Sepatelli.
I think it's likely prudent to, to review the, the bylaw itself to ensure, because I thought that there was some wording in there that identified that.
If there's not, then add it. If it's yes, that's fine.
Okay, so here's, here's the direction.
We will, is this time-sensitive as a second reading, Mr. or Mr. Sepatelli?
So, I mean, what can happen? I mean, obviously... The fact is that Counsel can still give second reading to this bylaw tonight, and then defer reading, a third reading of the bylaw to a subsequent meeting in September.
We have the opportunity to make the amendment. If it's not already in there, we can make the amendment, even though we pass it at second reading, and we can make the final version available for a third reading. Counsel Clotta.
Yes, thank you. May I suggest to the Chair of Development Review that we review this bylaw at our next Development Review Committee meeting, which is Thursday morning? Thank you.
Yeah.
That was going to be my suggestion when we heard the vote, because I think there is something in there.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? It's Carrie, you can ask me. Thank you. So with that, I'm assuming that we're going to table the third reading. I would need, need a motion to table Counsel Byer, seconded by Counsel Valentino. It's non-debatable. All in favor? It's carried, so third reading is tabled. We're now moving into the Mayor's Report. Oh, sorry, Mr. Sepatelli.
I believe it's September fourth is the next Council meeting. Yeah, so table to September fourth meeting. Mayor's Report, this is for the activities July seventeenth to August thirteenth. Along with Administration, we met with CBC North Country on July twenty-fifth. Proud to announce that they have hired a new broadcaster for CBC North, who will be, he's a young guy from Toronto. He'll be starting in September, and, and we will be hearing a voice of CBC North as of that time. Along with Council members and Administration, we met with NCN Chief and Counsel on August third and thirteenth regarding the Municipal Services Development Agreement. The bi-weekly Thompson two thousand twenty conference calls continue. Counselors attended the provincial announcement on the Fleet Net system with Premier Pallister and Ministers Wharton and Pedersen. Various committee meetings were held, Development Review, Special Finance and Admin, Special Recreation and Community Services, and Finance and Admin. I would look to Counsel to report on any activities on behalf of the City of Thompson.
Counsel Byer.
As you mentioned, we... Deputy Mayor Smook, I believe Counselor Clotta, Counselor Wong, Counsel Madichuk, and myself. We all attended the announcement at Fleet Net. Thank you to our, Mr. McGinnis. We had a list of topics to bring up to the ministers had we had the chance to speak with them. Deputy Smook actually handed copies of the list to both Ministers Peterson and Wharton, and I had an opportunity to highlight some of the things that we have lobbied already, the province on, and tried to give it a, either a stronger or a refreshed or a different emphasis to see if we can get any inroads. Hard to tell when you're in a situation like that, if you've had a major impact on anybody. But they were certainly attentive, and they were not negative about any of the things that we discussed.
Yes, I also had the copies to the Premier and... Kelly Bindle, so all four of our government people in attendance got it. I also expressed concerns to the Premier about one twenty-eight hemlock and that it's a government project that's been canceled, but that in their due diligence, they should really see the cleanup of that area. I would like to say this last couple weeks, we've lost Frank DeGrave, a longtime school board employee and City of Thompson mentor. He wasn't retired out of Thompson, but he passed away. And Roy McGinnis, Trapper extraordinaire, worked for Conservation. One of the first two residents of Thompson, Manitoba, one of the first two houses was Roy. So he passed away last Monday. And I would just like to say, up and coming. Recycling Center, Open House, Wednesday, August fifteenth, eleven to three. Hot dogs for lunch. Please go see the new baler. Go see what we're talking about. When everybody's questioning a budget time, what the recycling center does, now's your opportunity. North Star Air, grand opening Saturday, October, August eighth, noon to four P M. Go out to North Hanger Road and check out North Star Air. And hey, if you have, I think it's eight or ten people, pull a plane. They're looking for people to go in. All funds they raise and that's going to go to charity, so let's step up to the plate. Thank you.
Any other information? Okay, I've had a request from Mr. Sepatelli that, in the meantime, that would shed light on the third reading of the bylaw of financial assistance in regards to the question of eligibility. But in order to discuss that, I would have to go back to the mover and secondary of tabling to lift it from the table. So I'd go back to the mover and secondary. That's okay, that we lifted from the table, so we're back to the third reading of bylaw. I'll go to Mr. Sepatelli to provide...
Just for Counsel. Information in regards to sort of the request sort of from that outstanding amounts owing to the city. So in Article three of the bylaw itself, three point zero three, sub clauses H and I state that the owner applying for, for financial assistance has outstanding taxes, utility charges, or other amounts owing to the municipality, or the nation has outstanding service fees or other amounts owing to the municipality at the time of its application for net financial assistance. And this is in regards to Section three oh three, says financial assistance will not be provided to, to an owner or a nation with respect to the following. So it currently addresses the comments that have been made by Counsel Wong.
Satisfied with the wording that's already in the clause? Okay, so with that, then we'll move forward with the resolution. Are there any questions on the resolution that we have before us? This is third reading and recorded vote.
One concern I have...
Mr.?
And that's that they don't, with NCN, they don't want the word taxes used. So if we use the word taxes and they don't have that in their agreement, will they also be affected by this?
We're not using the word taxes for the... The First Nations? It's service fees.
Okay, so is that covered in this?
Currently, service fees is identif...
I heard you say utility, but I didn't hear services.
It says the nation has outstanding service fees or other amounts owing to the municipality at the time of its application for financial assistance. And service fees is a terminology that's used in the Municipal Development and Services Agreement.
So any recorded vote? All those in favor? Carrie, you can ask me. Voting in favor, Counsel Madichuk, Counsel Byer, Counsel Wong, Counsel Ellis, Counsel Clotta, Counsel Foley, Counsel Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smook, and Mayor Fenske. It's carried. Thank you. I look for a motion to adjourn. Counsel Byer, Counsel Foley, all in favor. We stand adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.